Thank you all for joining us here today. We are in a very different environment than we have had with the other candidates. More casual and have a chat, since the other room is like an inferno. We will start by letting you introduce yourself and say why you're running. Let's just start left to right for this question. Barb, why don't you start?
Sure. My name is Barb Campbell, and I am running for Ben City Council again. I have been serving on City Council for two terms. It is such an honor, such a privilege, such a challenge, so rewarding to be on City Council. Honestly, the opportunity to actually be able to help people to make changes in our city that are good for current and future citizens is so rewarding that it buoyes me through the challenging times, frankly, because the challenges, you know, are really tough. And in particular, right now, our city is facing some, you know, really unprecedented for us. We are facing those growing pains, turning from a smaller town to a city, and one of those pains includes homelessness. And we have chosen to take that on and try and help. And wow, is it a challenge. But again, I really have enjoyed it, and I feel like my expertise, my institutional knowledge, my experience is really what sets me apart, not just from the other candidates in my own race, but honestly, from any other candidates or anyone that will be serving on City Council. I looked around and realized, oh, wow, without me, no one on Council would have more than two years' experience. And just as a citizen, that seems like, oh, I'd rather my city had folks with a little more knowledge onboard. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me here today, and thank you to my fellow candidates for being here. It's so exciting to see everyone so involved in this very important race, as Barb so eloquently placed. My name is Erlen Taylor, and I'm running for City Council Position 4. I am new to here, to Bend, and also, I am running for Bend City Council because over the past, as my predecessor left, I started to think about the things that I could represent and bring. And as a woman of color, I felt that I could represent the underrepresented citizens of the city of Bend. So I am running on the issues of affordability and housing, which is my background. I am running on the issues of homelessness. As Barb said, these are very challenging times. Our city is in great growth and has been for the past several years, and I feel like I can represent and bring a change to Bend and to the city. And I'm looking forward to serving our beautiful community, and I'm looking forward to learning and growing and listening and acting on what the citizens of Bend want to see for the future and the growth of Bend. Thank you.
Yeah, you are up.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Karen Johnson. I'm also running for City Council Position 4. I'm a retired federal prosecutor, prosecutor for 13 years with Motnamah County District Attorney's Office and 25 years in the federal system for the U.S. Department of Justice. My goal was to prosecute criminals, to help the victims of crime, and as the years passed, also to help people who were involved in the criminal justice system. Over the years, I've known hundreds of people who were alcoholics or addicted to drugs, and I know the programs that will help them, and I know how to help them, just by virtue of years and years of experience in dealing with such people. I'm running because I've been intimately involved in the City Council's city affairs for almost eight years. I was on the planning commission in 2014, 2016. Then, since then, I've been the Bend Land use Chair for the Old Farm District Neighborhood Association. I'm a lawyer, of course. Land use has always been one of my interests. And as a land use chair, I'm involved in every policy decision that the city makes. I have to write it up, I have to analyze it, I send it out to our website, and it's posted for all the people in the Old Farm District to review. We have about 4,000 households that we're serving. So I'm a scientist by training. I'm data-driven. I've been following what other cities around the country are doing to address our problems. And I wrote a white paper, which my husband says no one will read. He laughed at me. But I have specific solutions that other cities are doing, and we need to implement them. I know how.
Great. Judy, I think you had one that probably would be good to kid out with.
A lot good, yes.
Yep, okay. So what is your vision for Bend going forward? And I'd like you to be as specific as possible. Basically, what is your vision for future Bend?
Erlen, why don't we start with you? Okay. So Bend, as we know, has seen significant growth and continues to see significant growth, which is great. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to stay, to build your future home. I see expansion, obviously, in addressing what needs to happen to shelter the unsheltered currently, which is really key. I see growth in housing, which is my background. I've been a female business owner in the housing industry for over 16 years, and I really plan to collaborate with state, local, and officials and resources to find out how do these people, how have they become, you know, homeless? And what can we do? What more can we do? I believe the current City Council has done, you know, what they have or they could, not obviously in the best way possible, but we need to do more. We need to really dig deep and find out why are these people unsheltered? And what can we do? What resources can we implement? And what resources do we have to get them sheltered? And then also to allow people that, like our teachers or our EMTs, to be able to live here? Because currently, these workforce and our workforce can't afford to live here. My plan is to really collaborate and come up with a multifaceted way of bringing Bend and our neighbors together so that we can all enjoy this beautiful city that we call home.
Karen, next.
Thank you. The workforce housing and affordable housing, to me, is an essential thing that has to be solved. I'm an environmentalist. The idea that people have to live in Primeville and drive into town and drive back, I think is intolerable. Two years ago, I wrote a guest letter for the Bend Bulletin, and I listed the four solutions, specifically that Bend needs to do. They have all been ignored by the City Council to date. Number one, build smaller units. House Bill 2001 was passed to allow duplexes, triplexes, and quads on residential lots. That wasn't a big deal for Bend, because we already did that, with the exception of quads. It was a big deal for Legos Regal, and they're still fighting it. It wasn't a big deal for us. Other cities around the state came up with codes that would encourage smaller units, the sort of 900-square-foot house, the old starter homes, people used to be able to buy. Bend did not. We've done nothing to encourage the construction of smaller units that are necessarily cheaper. The second thing I recommended was mandatory inclusionary housing. Development wants to put in 100 houses in Santa Barbara. 15% have to be affordable for workforce or for affordable housing. And that could be developed here, and it's not in. The third thing is short-term rentals. I was on the planning commission in 2015, when the city decided what to do with short-term rentals. I recommended we follow the Portland Code. That's to say, no whole-house rentals, but allow owners' occupied buildings to have short-term rentals. And finally, the fourth, which I thought is we should follow the Colorado resort cities. They've been doing this for years. They are subsidizing affordable housing by building it on city-owned land, which is to say, we've reduced by at least one-third the cost of the house, because the land is on a 99-year lease. That's what we need to do, and Juniper Ridge is sitting out there, and I think it's prime for what we should do.
We're going to talk a lot more about all of these issues of housing. Barb, just wanted to remind you this is...
I was going to ask for a minute to respond.
This is the original question, what's your vision for Bend?
Yes, how would I just go with that?
I just wanted to couch that with, we're going to touch housing and affordable housing.
Okay. So I will. I will go back to vision for the city. And my vision is really quite specific. I've served on Council for two terms. And specifically, I see housing for our teachers and our workforce out on what's called the Stevens Road tract. That property was owned by the state as a trust for education. We were able to negotiate and get 20 acres entirely dedicated to affordable housing, on which we, the city, will be able to do that. And we think we might, in fact, be able to dedicate some of that to actual employees throughout the school district. That kind of dedication for housing is tricky because of federal fair housing laws, but we think that because the land came from the trust for education, that we can now use the housing for people who work in education. So that's a tremendous opportunity that we think we have. And then the other opportunities are in the Central District and over here near the box factory. These are spots where we believe we can really start to see the density that might lead to, honestly, less expensive living for people, where they might be able to find an apartment that is less expensive, and transportation. Transportation costs for people here in Central Oregon have been really high, because we still have that suburban-style development, where entire neighborhoods of people have to get in their car to do absolutely anything. And we're infilling commercial in with residential, as well as improving our transit system so people will have choices on how to get around.
Thanks. So I'm going to back up a little bit. Erlen, this will be, no, I'm sorry, this will be to Karen first. We want to just touch on...
Well, we can rebuttal. Rebuttal at some point.
If you'd like to, at any point rebut anything that anyone says, please just speak up and say I'd like to.
All right. I'm going to rebut this. Stevens Trap is looking at maybe 2,000 houses, 20 acres for affordable housing and workforce housing. The density right now for residential is between 4 and 7.3 acres. Say we put in 10 units per acre. That's 200 units. That's nothing. You have to do the math. The area median income for a person is about $68,000. Median house is cost about $760,000, and a person making the AMI can afford about a $300,000 house. You've got a $460,000 gap per house. None of the programs that are being proposed address that gap, bridge that gap. We have got to subsidize it on city-owned land. That's the only thing that's going to bridge that gap.
You can have a one-minute due.
Thank you. You know, Karen just has not been paying attention to what we've been doing. We've done exactly that. We have given away property all around the city for affordable housing. There are more than 200 units of housing that will be affordable to folks who are making less than area median income, that are going in at this very minute south of town, because we changed our infrastructure. We moved a sewer project up on our CIP list. The property that's right across from our police station, that was property we owned and just gave away for that project. There's another one on Connors. We've been doing exactly this thing. We've been subsidizing smaller units and changing our code to allow smaller units long before House Bill 2001 came along. We started doing that in 2010 with our cottage code, with allowing greater density, with density bonuses. So we're doing it.
Right. I'd like to put in my one-minute, two seconds of this. Seeing that my background is in housing, and I've been doing it for over 16 years, I find that although some of the solutions are very well-intended, I do have concerns over the fair housing impact that you're speaking of, because I do believe that it would be in violation of fair housing, and that's a federal violation. And I also do agree that there's just not enough. I think, you know, affordable housing needs to be spoken of in all terms. What's affordable to me is not what's affordable to my neighbors, not what's affordable to you. So it needs to be a multifaceted solution, and that's what I will bring to the table with my experience. And I feel like we need to come together, collaborate, re-look at our resource, take a pause, before we jump into putting funds and time and energy into things that we've seen in other places haven't really given the results that we intend to do.
Well, we're going to have another couple opportunities here. I want to talk about homelessness. Karen, you are up for this one first. What I'd love to know, we wanted to just ask about your approach, but I think since we've already touched on it a little bit, what would be super helpful, would be to say, what are your specific steps that you would take to address homelessness? What is your plan?
If I were elected, the day after I was sworn in, I'd introduce legislation to revoke the clause that allows low-barrier shelters in residential zones. No other city in the country does it, as far as I can tell. They put homeless shelters on industrial land, and there's actually a minimum barrier distance between that shelter and residential units. There is no evidence that putting low-barrier shelters in residential neighborhoods helps anybody. I think it's dangerous. I think that the public safety is not being served by the present homeless code. I will change that. From what I've seen, homeless folks need to be housed, and we have to, by law, provide shelter space for them, on land that will not start a fire. I toured Juniper Ridge with about three people from Boyd Acres Neighborhood a couple of days ago. They talked about the fire they had in 2020 that was started by homeless camps there. The fire trucks could not get in. They had to bring in fire retardant by plane from the airport. It's a huge public concern. And so I would start with housing homeless on industrial sites where fires cannot happen. I would also encourage your high-barrier shelters. St. Vincent de Paul has just started one called St. Vincent's Place. The Bethlehem Inn does the same thing. You have people who have to be sober, and they're committed to a program. They were assigned counselors, one-on-one. I don't know if you've lived with Ellen Evans, Helping Hands Rehab Rescue, that is running out of the Bayberry Jail in Motnamah County. He has a 75% success rate with that. People have to want to change. You cannot make them want to change themselves. So both, treat those two types of shelters very, very differently.
Thanks. Barbara, we'll just keep going clockwise. So Barb, specific plan around homelessness?
Sure. You know, the first thing is, you know, Karen makes it very clear that we have not done a great job helping the public understand what happened with that shelter code. So for example, Karen believes that it was the Bend City Council that allowed low-barrier shelters in residential zones. That was the state legislature that passed a bill that was referred to as the supersiting bill. And what that bill said is exactly the opposite of what Karen is saying. That bill said you must allow these things in residential zones, and you cannot put them in heavy industrial. It was honestly those restrictions. But there was nothing else in that bill about what those things might look like, what restrictions there might be, what requirements there might be. And that's what we did. We added restrictions to a bill that came from the state that just was a blanket, again, they called it supersiting, as in you can cite these things anywhere. So we first said, we need to protect our community better. We need to put restrictions. And we did that with restrictions like there's got to be supervision, there's got to be someone on site 24 hours. That was because of what we did. The other thing is, I just, again, need to continue to talk about our efforts toward building affordable, permanent housing. The city of Bend is a leader in the entire state, building apartments that are available for folks who are, at this moment, homeless and will be able to move in. For example, that project that's down south of town, as of this moment, 30% of the people who have already moved in were formerly homeless. That, and cooperating with the county on emergency and temporary shelter, which is where most of the funding goes, is through the county for that type of shelter. I think we can make real progress together.
Thanks, Barb. Erlen?
Yeah, so that's a great question, because it's on the minds, and we hear it as you're walking across in parks and talking to your neighbors. Homelessness is a very key issue to our community. And I believe that what I think I will do, not think, but I know I will do, is the minute I'm elected in City Council, I think we need to learn, we need to really understand, why are they unsheltered? When you blanket, I don't believe in pretty much saying that every homeless person has any sort of mental condition or situation. I think, quite frankly, we have people that fallen in rough times and that have become homeless. And so we need to figure out a way to not just temporarily shelter them, but to permanently shelter them, or find them permanent housing, and what's affordable to them. Again, it goes hand in hand. I also think we need to really collaborate with the county and the state and come up with other solutions and think of outside-the-box type of ideas, because as well-intended as the current City Council has done with the homeless, I just don't think they've done enough. And it clearly continues to be a safety issue, I believe. I do agree with Karen that there is a safety issue and concern amongst all the residents within our community. My neighbors talk about it all the time, and I just don't think the current City Council has done enough. And I intend to really learn, understand why, and find out what we could do collaboratively to come up with ways to get them out of the unsheltered situation and into more of a shelter, either temporarily or permanently, whichever they choose.
Rebuttal.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate that Erlen has that objective, especially when she's going to, I assume, try and keep her business running in Oregon City and try and, you know, run her own life. But honestly, I will say, it is not for the city of Bend, it's not for City Council, it's not even for the police to try and understand the specific needs of individuals. That is our, those are our service providers, and they absolutely are doing that work. There are folks at Central Oregon Veterans Outreach that I honestly believe can tell you every single veteran who is homeless in our community, and whether they might be successful in an apartment, or whether they just need a bed for the night. There are service providers who do that outreach with individuals, and they absolutely, that's why we have worked on such a wide variety of solutions for people, it's because we know they all have different needs.
Karen, I think you wanted to...
Yes. We need to first define terms. Affordable housing is a term of art. It applies to people with an income of 80% or less of the AMI. It's always subsidized. Workforce housing is people between an income of 80 and 120% of the AMI. It is never subsidized, and that needs to be done. Second statistic, between 40 and 50% of the people who are homeless are there for economic reasons. They're working people. They just cannot afford to live in the rent that is here. I'm going to talk about House Bill 4001, Section 3. It reads that local governments shall approve an application for development of land for emergency shelters on property if the facility, Section F, will not pose an unreasonable risk to public health or safety. The provisions of this bill are repealed as of July 1, 2021. We are not required to put shelters in residential neighborhoods. That provision expired July 2021.
You're talking about 2001, right? Not 4001.
I'm talking about House Bill 4001, Section 3, Section F.
That one was renewed for another two years, so now it rents until 2023. And we do, in fact, our Affordable Housing Committee, and with the funds that we at the city have available, we do subsidize up to 120% of the AMI in our city. And we have found ways to subsidize the very lowest-income folks, below 40% of our AMI. That's amazing. We're able to house folks who are only making $18,000 a year in our community. Yes, we do build that permanent housing that people need. That's why we need the county to help us with temporary and emergency housing.
I'm going to speak on behalf of Barb's comment about my business in Oregon City. I was a single mom when I decided to start my business in the state of Oregon, and I feel very proud of choosing housing as part of the reason why I decided to start my business. I, part of the reason why I decided to start my business is because I personally couldn't find affordable housing at one point, and thought I should get into this industry and make a change. So I believe that I'm the candidate that will come into this City Council with a change. I mean, you can have, continue to vote for the status quo, which has been six years, as you pointed out, or you can vote for me, which is a change. And a change in an industry that's been my industry for the past 20-plus years at this point.
Thank you.
Eight years.
I think in light of the facts of how the format of this is going, we're going to reduce rebuttals to 30 seconds.
Sure.
And not only, we can get more of them in, but we have a lot of questions, so we'll just play...
No problem.
And I appreciate the dynamic.
I appreciate time for rebuttal.
I've got two more hours, aren't you?
I know, exactly. Can't we just stay until five? Judy says no. We can say, you guys are turning off the camera.
We'll run out of battery.
That's hilarious.
Oh, shoot. Memory card's gone.
You're right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Now we can move on. Shifting gears a little bit, I believe, Barb, I'm going to start with you on this one. What is your approach to improving multimodal transportation in Bend, i.e. bike and bus transit?
Absolutely. This is one where I'm really excited. I've been serving on all of the city's transportation committees and the regional transportations and the statewide transportation, and we are working on a new design for our bus system that will include mobility hubs. A mobility hub is a place where two different forms of transportation, at least, come together. So the most traditional is like a park-and-ride, where you can drive your car, there's a parking place, and then you get on the bus and you get to work. We will be creating those with maybe additional resources, like bikes for rent, or maybe life blockers, where you can securely store your bike. And these, and the real benefit of these, is they will be positioned throughout the city. Right now, we have a spoke-and-hub model system, which means pretty much any trip anybody wants to take, they have to go to that Hawthorne Station and transfer. That's putting so much pressure on the Hawthorne Station, which was never even designed to be a bus station in the first place, and is putting pressure on that neighborhood. All the folks that live around there, and everybody who's trying to drive around there, know that it's just not a great spot for a big central bus station. Well, we're going to end up with multiple stations around the city that will allow us to redesign so that routes don't have to have that connection. You can actually go to and from where you want. We've also made improvements like technology that will tell you exactly where the bus is. The bus is two blocks away. Time to get out of your nice worn house and go out and get on the bus, instead of waiting at a stop, wondering when is it going to come as the snow is falling. I'm really excited about the changes to our transportation system. I think it will make a big difference for people.
Thanks.
Yeah, so transportation, again, very huge topic. My intent is to go in and continue on some of the efforts that the Bend City Council has started and expand on it, expand on the technology of it, and expand on maybe learning from other cities that have gone through this growth spurt in their cities and how they handle it, and then implement those that fit well with our community, because with growth, we know comes more traffic and more frustration and less, you know, more cars out on the road. So that's my plan for the future of Bend with regards to transportation. So that's my plan for the future of Bend with regards to transportation. Just really hone in on what have we been doing, what we could do better, continue on the path that this current city council is working on and expand on it.
Great. Karen?
I think I get crabby when I talk about this. I got here in two thousand and fourteen, I saw buses, I thought, where are the bus stops? It took me a couple of years to realize the bus stops are poles sticking up by the sidewalk with no shelter for the elements, the sun, the snow, not even a lousy place to sit down. A city that does not have sheltered bus stops is not taking mass transit seriously, number one. Number two, bicycling. I live south of Reed Market, I used to bike to the Safeway on Third. I don't do it anymore because it is too scary. That little six-inch white painted line is not enough to protect me from the traffic lanes. And fighting across Reed Market is scary. You get up to Fifteenth and Wilson, you gotta do the diagonal to get into the park. It's not practical. People are not going to bike, number one, if it's snowing or raining, even if they're really tough, which I was, I'm not. And they're not going to bike until they feel safe, until we have better barriers to separate the two lanes. In terms of these hubs, again, where's the money for them? We need a dedicated transit district for Bend. And this gold bond, in my opinion, was worthless for that. One hundred and ninety-two million dollars and only eight million is allocated for transit. This town is not serious about it. Would be a whole lot more money.
Karen is absolutely right. In two thousand and fourteen, there was no support for buses for mass transit in our city. I had to fight on the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization to make sure that the funding that had come from that organization for buses for our system continued to be for buses for our system. I have literally been in meetings with Bend city councilors who ask, why do we even need sidewalks? That is no longer the case. We do have money in our bond, we do have the desire to improve. And in order to turn into a transit district, we have to get the people to vote for that in a ballot measure. We can't make that decision for them.
How, how much will these hubs cost?
What's that?
How much will the hubs cost?
Oh, we have, there's a, there's a study underway right now, trying to identify locations. And I don't think anybody knows because each individual hub will be different. One that might have a big parking lot, another might honestly just be buses and bikes if it's closer to downtown without that big parking lot component to it. So the, the cost between them will be vastly different.
Thank you. Judy, I think you're up.
I'm up. Okay. So if inflation continues to grow and/or the recession occurs, how do you see, and what do you see as the city's role in helping in that regard? And I think.
I think we're, Erlin's first.
Yep.
Well, inflation, as it says, right now, it seems to be, continuing to grow and it doesn't seem to be stopping. And recession seems to be somewhat almost inevitable. I think that the Bend City Council needs to be really alert and not reactive, but, you know, what is the word I'm trying to think of? Plan accordingly, like start now. We don't need to wait until we vote in a new Bend City Council. We need to be proactive on this approach, that's the word I was looking for earlier. And we need to really start thinking about, how is this going to affect us economically? How is this going to affect us, again, with housing? How many more people are going to end up being outside, unsheltered? How is that going to happen and what resources, what can we do, what funding, how can we help as a community? And I think we need to be proactive about that now and not wait until we have a new Bend City Council or a new mayor or a new round. I think we need to be addressing it now more than ever.
You're up, Karen.
I'm cynical about good feelings and good intentions. I'm data-driven, I like hard solutions that have proven to work. There is nothing we can do about inflation. The President of the United States cannot do anything about inflation. Because Russia invaded Ukraine, oil prices are through the roof, and we are stuck with that. To say we're going to handle inflation, where is the money going to come from? Obviously, things are going to be costing more. And as it is right now, we continue with six, eight percent inflation, we're going to need to find the money someplace. And let's talk specific programs. Are we going to increase property taxes? Are we going to do an income tax? Are we going to do a sales tax? Sales tax, ooh. A bus tax? Get specific. Just say, well, we want to do something about it. That is, excuse me, worthless. Worthless.
She's still, Karen, do you have specifics?
We thought, we thought, fight the Ukraine maybe, that would help. But I'm too old for that.
Bart?
Yeah, Karen's absolutely right. And, you know, we're talking about the national and global economy, you know, and what can the Bend City Council do? Well, no. What the Bend City Council can do is take care of the city. The city itself costs people money. What we can do is be careful stewards of their tax money in the first place. We have one of the lowest tax bases in this state that was frozen in the eighties by the voters, and we stretch that money better than any other city I know. Any decision we do, we look at cities three up and three down. The cities that are closest in population to us, three below us, three above us. So cities like Lake Oswego are too small, we don't consider them, we compare ourselves to everyone else. And we do more with less every single time. Our affordable housing, our housing department, right now, we have three people. If you look at like Gresham, which is actually is pretty close to us, they have more than a dozen people working on housing. Every department, down to our mechanics, are working on twice as many pieces of rolling stock than any other city. You know, that's what we can do. The transportation bond, as big as it is, the committee recommended two hundred and fifty million dollars. And we honestly could see that people were having a hard time because of COVID. We could see that prices were rising and decided they just couldn't afford that. Every single transportation bond oversight committee meeting that I attend, because I'm a liaison, we look at how are the costs coming in and what did we promise the citizens? We promised them that their tax bill would go up by a certain amount. And every single time, we look to make sure we're staying in that amount. All of our projects come in, all of it come in on time and on budget. I couldn't be more proud of that. That's what we can do, that's what we do do, we'll keep it up.
I agree with Barb there. Our city staff is amazing. Lynn McHale, it's like she has a golden goose in the back.
It's amazing.
Yeah, she takes a million dollars of our money and she.
Turns it into thirteen?
Yeah, yeah. How does she do that?
Yeah.
But our, our staff is understaffed.
Yeah.
And they're, they're stretched to the limit.
Yeah.
And I think we should raise our taxes. We're going to be elected if we say that.
I don't disagree, Karen. I don't disagree. The other way to describe that is they're overworked and they're stretched and we don't have enough people. You know, there is a perspective like that. Our permanent department, we've had funded but unfilled positions for years, just trying to find people has been a problem in this economy. But, you know, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there are, there are folks who just need help.
Well, you know, if all three of us agreed to run for a tax.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't have a choice.
Yeah. Food and beverage tax, Karen, honestly, is something that comes up every once in a while, that all day long I would talk about a food and beverage tax, I really would.
We won't, we won't bring up gas tax, it's old news, but now we could go there too.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
So this one starts with Karen.
Sure.
Did Erlin?
I know, I.
Did you, did you really start this one?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm not, but anything, because I.
Yeah, here we go.
I agree.
We're starting losing track.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
This one's starting with Karen. We'd like you to name a time, describe a scenario in which, we know the Bend City Council is nonpartisan, but we'd like to hear a time that you worked with someone of a differing political persuasion to achieve a goal.
So outside of the Bend economy again?
Name, just give us an example of a time that you worked with someone who you might not politically agree with to achieve some meaningful goal.
Yes. I've lived in Guam twenty-five years because I did the Department of Justice, the District of Guam and the Northern Mariana Islands. There was no humane society there. You can't imagine how awful it's worth the shelter which is run by the government. We created a humane society. At one point, they tried to evict us, the government, we ended up evicting them and took over the shelter in two thousand and one. I helped put a quarter of a million dollars' worth of infrastructure into that shelter, including a fourteen-hundred-square-foot cat house, which was named after me, the Karen B. Johnson Cat House. My cousin in Texas thought that was just a riot. To do that took twenty years of working with government officials, with donors, with people who wanted to create or provide money or work as opposed to, to money. It was a huge project and we were able to put it together and it's one of the things I'm most proud of in my life. A second, I'm one of the founders of Think What, our rehab facility, which is doing very, very well because we're the only hospital east of the Cascades, the trees wildlife rehab. And that also involved working with state agencies, federal agencies, people who wanted to donate, people who did not want to help, and that was also hugely rewarding. So those are two things that I've started and I've done. It just took a lot of perseverance, but those are the things I'm most proud of.
Thank you.
Barb, I know you've had some experience working with people of differing political persuasions, so interested to hear your take on this.
Well, I've had eight years, you know, literally sitting next to people of different political persuasions, people I did not agree with, I've already talked about having to actually fight just to maintain funding for buses. But the project I'm the very most proud of is the Veterans Village. The Veterans Village, I worked with a specific county commissioner who, wow, I'll just leave it at that, and a state representative who was very much, you know, as we say, across the aisle. But veterans, homeless veterans, there is, you know, I will work with anybody in order to help folks who have volunteered to risk their lives to protect me and my home and my way of life. And we were successful. The county was able to find land. Central Oregon Veterans Outreach and the Heroes Foundation were able to find donations. We at the city were able to find more money and it was another case of infrastructure. Under normal conditions, that project would have had to spend millions of dollars on sidewalks in a nearby street. We at the city exempted them from that expense. Sometimes that's what we can do. We don't actually have money to give someone, but sometimes we can take away cost. I was able to do that and then bring the project forward to the Bend City Council before it was even complete. And there were only a dozen cabins before it was even complete. It's, it's only been a year and six veterans have graduated from that program onto permanent housing. I could not be more proud of that. It's a model for what we can do for other people around our community.
Thanks Barb.
I love this question because in my profession, this comes up a lot. I have to be the center of everything and you have, on one side, you have landlords and on another side, you have tenants. And I, in my company, I'm very proud of the fact that we, for the past sixteen-plus years, like I've been saying, have been able to bridge that. And that, and that evolves in allowing people to have housing and providing housing for people from all kinds of walks of life, from veterans to people that are moving into the city, to all kinds of people. And politically, I get a lot of feedback on whether or not I'm, I'm pro this or pro that. And I would say I'm a collaborator at heart and I always answer that question by saying, we're a community, a community that has multiple different opinions about how we should go about doing things, but we need to be respectful of those opinions, whether or not you agree or disagree. We need to listen to the citizens, we need to maintain what's better for Bend and not get sidetracked by political views and agendas. Because what's important is that we provide and serve the community of Bend and not what party are you with and who do you align with. So I'm glad you asked that question because that question gets asked a lot. In fact, Karen and I were just discussing that before we started and this interview. And it's, it's important that people understand we need to have compassion, we need to listen to one another, we need to collaborate with one another. We live in this community together and we need to come together as a community and not worry about political parties.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Well, I'll start, Barb, over here. I'm coming better.
We're keeping track. We're keeping track.
That clock gets off. Barb, could you say something you appreciate about an opponent in this race?
Oh, that is so easy. I appreciate it that they're running at all. Bend City Council is a difficult job. We don't make anything like a paycheck. You're essentially volunteering to take on the problems of a hundred thousand other people and just anybody that would step up to do that, I appreciate. I absolutely appreciate that Erlin is a small business owner and is a woman who created that for herself. I did that myself. I had a small business here in town for ten years and, you know, creating jobs, you know, she creates jobs, that's fantastic. Karen has already served the city of Bend. She's been on our planning commission. Her, her love for animals just touches my heart. We seldom have any opportunity to help animals as the Bend City Council, but I will tell you, every time a cougar is killed in our community, our police chief hears from me and our city of Bend hears from me and the Wildlife Service hears from me. So I absolutely always look for any opportunity that we have. I'm so proud that our properties are what's, on what's called the Wildlife Corridor. We don't use any pesticides, we plant pollinator-friendly plants just in order that monarch butterflies can honestly get through the city, across our streets. Tiny little things, opportunities like that. And, you know, all day long, I, I, anybody who loves animals is a friend of mine.
I have a cute cat, too.
So many. When I came back from my walk last night, I said that I left with three dogs and one cat and I came back with three cats and one dog.
Yeah. I couldn't agree with Barb more. I mean, just the fact that we have three women here and ready to serve this community. I'm proud to be even on the ballot, to even be a part of this group of people being considered for this very amazing and serving position. So I thank all your years of being in the city council. And, I mean, I don't know Karen personally, but I can see already how passionate she is for this community and I just think it's an honor to even be able to be sitting here next to these ladies and have the opportunity to serve the community of Bend as you have done so for eight years.
Thank you.
What was the question again?
Question is, just say something you appreciate about an opponent in this race.
Appreciate my opponents?
Yeah.
They're good, honest, decent, well-meaning people and they've dedicated their lives to try to make the place better. And if everybody did that, we would not have the problem.
Oh, right, yes.
No kidding, Karen.
Collaboration. Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Awesome. That's a fun question for us.
Yeah. It was fun for us, yeah.
And we have another fun question.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Erlin gets this one first.
I, 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 I can track.
Here we go.
Okay, here we go.
What, what, where would we find you on a Friday night if you're not in the campaign season?
Okay, what is it?
Where would we find you on a Friday night?
I love this. You will find my husband and I conversating with our neighbors, having a glass of wine at the park, walking our dogs. We're big dog lovers, we have two, they're the cutest little, so you can find us walking around. And I welcome you, we're very approachable, we love to talk to the citizens of Bend. We love to talk to the citizens of Bend and get to know where everyone's coming from. Having dinners at downtown or at the local farmers. I mean, you will find us on a Friday night, definitely out. We're, we like to be out talking to people and then going, so.
Thanks, Karen, you are up.
Well, this Friday, I will be down at the Old Mill District handing out my flyers. And that's Friday, and the next Friday afternoon.
After campaign season, where are we going to find you?
Hopefully skiing. I like to ski, although I'm getting kind of old. I used to do Black Diamonds, now the community is looking a lot better. But yeah, I'm an athletic person, I'm an athlete person.
Great, thank you. Barb?
I'll probably be out with my personal trainers, which are my three dogs. You will probably find me either at the river or at a dog park. And I will tell you something that I really enjoy. I think of it as like stealth city councillor. And I won't tell anybody who I am or what I do. And then try and engage them in a conversation. What do you think about this? How do you feel about that? Where do you live? And I find, wow, can I get interesting and really true answers from people and start, you know, the fact is, you know, when people write us, it's, they've probably gotten to some point of real frustration and, you know, really are upset. And you know, it's hard to get a feeling from just the balance of the community. And you know, I really think that's really important is, you know, how are people feeling when it's just a normal day for them and they're just out walking their dogs? You know? But yeah, the dog parks, I'm like so many folks in Bend. We were Dog City USA for a while and yeah. But you know, it's kind of those two things, dogs and people, you know?
We want to give everybody an opportunity to talk about anything they didn't, we didn't bring up, an issue that's really important to you. That's kind of our wrap-up. Let us know something that's, you know, is important coupled with sort of your closing pitch. I think we start with Karen on this one? Wait, did we?
Yeah.
Yes.
See?
It's not just the gray hair that causes it.
I'm writing, it's like, I'm writing your notes, I didn't know, but-
I'm running because for eight years, the city council has done nothing. In the sense that they don't hire experts, but problems have come up, they do not look at what other cities are doing. My brother and I own a condo in Vail. When we renovated the building, we paid a whole lot of money into the Vail's ID program. This was eight years ago. They were working on workforce housing, subsidizing it. I want specific programs and to say I'm going to work and collaborate, that's for giving worthless. We need specific programs, we need to get them going now. If I were elected, I propose that we adopt the Crested Buttes Workforce Housing Program. For example, right now they've got six acres and they're building housing for, either for sale or for affordable rent. And they're doing a 99-year lease on the land. And so people can afford to actually buy a house there, they can afford to rent the units that are going up. We need to start doing this now. We should have started doing it six years ago. And I think it's time to stop talking about, you know, what we'd like to do and get going and institute specific programs. And that's what I want to do.
I mentioned that we have 20 acres for affordable housing over which we have complete control. And frankly, Karen poo-pooed that as worthless and nothing and it's only going to produce it. But she thinks Crested Buttes, six acres, is some fantastic thing that we ought to be replicating. The third, the other thing that we haven't talked about that I would is equity. It is diversity and representation. Frankly, when I first ran, if I had not been elected, there would have been one woman on city council. And honestly, in 2014, diversity really did, it looked like men and women. All of the committees that I served on, the average was seven men to one woman. And so I introduced a bill that said, at the very least, the committees that we appoint, we can make sure that they are balanced on at least these things that we can ask. We can't ask somebody if they're straight or gay, we can't ask what nationality they are. But we can find out if they, what side of town they live on. We can make sure that our committees are represented by people who live in all four quadrants of the city. We can make sure that we have some younger people and some older people, some people who are still working, some people who are retired. And I made that happen the second year that I was on. Now we have stepped that up. We now have a Human Rights and Equity Commission. We are now moving forward in this direction with even bigger strides because I don't think it's possible to create policy that is good for everyone unless everyone has a say in making that policy. And that means the people who are on our advisory committees, that's what we ourselves have control of and that's what I'll continue to work on.
I could agree with Barb more. Part of the reason why I ran for city council is because I personally felt underrepresented in the city, Bend City Council. And there are females just like myself and Hispanics just like myself of color that are underrepresented and their voices are not being heard. And I ran partly for this reason, to help that community and the entire Bend community be represented and their voices be heard. I think if you want to continue with what the status quo has been, then you vote for Barb. Otherwise, if you want to see change, then you vote for me. And I really hope that people will really support me and help me win this race to help better represent the city of Bend. You can go to my website, earlntaylor.com, and help me listen and learn from what you want to see change for the future of Bend.
Karen, rebuttal?
Of course.
Okay. 30% of Crested Buttes housing units are for workforce housing. Tally-rod, 32%. The programs have been in place for years. Why haven't we been looking at what other people are doing? It's time to start now.
Thank you. I have one final question. There's not going to be an opportunity for a rebuttal. This is just for Erlyn, just so we have some information. There's been some concern about your residency. I have just heard this from the public and I want to, I just want to give you an opportunity-
I love that you're asking this question. I almost addressed it earlier because I know everybody wants to talk about the fact that I've only been here for two years. I've been coming to Bend, as many of the residents of Bend, for many, many years, enjoying the community, enjoying the place my husband's in Oregonian. But more importantly, I do qualify. I've been living here in Bend and I've seen how Bend has changed in the past two years. It doesn't take more than two years to see change and to notice how there's challenges in the community. You don't need more than two years to notice how that challenges are needed or are obvious and needed to be changed. I mean, we need someone that's going to represent the voices of Bend. And I am part of Bend, I am part of the community. And that's my answer.
Okay, so it's fair to say you're living here full-time?
I live here full-time.
Okay.
Well, I can say we do a lot of endorsement interviews and I've really enjoyed this one. The discourse has been compelling, you guys have both been very polite in understanding. It's just been somewhat of a model, so really appreciate that you're all running and appreciate your time.